And welcome everyone to the January 22nd, 2024 Tuolton City Council Work Session. Leading off tonight, we have Mike McCarthy with his final Tuolton Moving Forward Report. Welcome, Mike. He's got it in hand.
All right. So yeah, we're pretty excited to be at this point with all of these projects. And so you should each have a copy of the final report. And walking through each of the different projects and costs and everything. And we have a short slideshow that I'll work through describing some of the projects. We're pretty excited. We're down to finishing off what we're calling the final five. But of course, there's always hiccups when you're getting towards the finish line. We had a couple of key items that were scheduled for PGE to be doing last week. Pretty much everybody involved with PGE last week was pulled into storm recovery. And so there's a couple of things there. And go to the next slide, please. All right. So tonight, we'll be talking about the final five, the last five projects that we're working on. And then we have the report card. And then this will be the last of our final annual reports as we are so close to the finish line with each of these major projects. And you can look back on our progress at tuoltonmovingforward.com. Here's a little bit of the history. Back in 2018, or actually before that even, the city had the vision for this program. And the vision to invest in our community in this way in terms of transportation. It passed on election night in May of 2018. And twenty, through that year, we figured out a little more of how the program is going to be structured, how things were going to work. Jeff Fox, at the time, was Public Works Director, pulled in Murray Smith, who is now consor, as the program manager. And they've been very helpful in delivering all of the projects. So the first ones were getting going in 2019, right about when I started here. And several more each year. And then this past year has been a very busy year. Is getting the last 12 projects done in this past year. Here's our map, and I love seeing them all green because we are substantially complete on each of them. We have a few last things that are getting going and getting done. One of them is the Tuolton Sherwood Martin Azzi 2I5, getting to the Nyberg Interchange Project that we got paved a couple of months ago now and restripped into the new lane configuration. Last week, PGE was scheduled to get the power to the traffic signal modification for bike safety that will help cyclists get across the new ramp to I-5 southbound. That's now scheduled for Thursday to be getting done at that point. But it is in the final lane configuration. Final striping will be coming in March. But it's all putting final thermoplastic down on the current striping as it is. And I think we're already seeing a lot of benefits and a lot of, I think, traffic flows improved quite a bit there already. Boones Ferry Corridor, that's another one. I'm real happy with how it came out. This picture on the left is as we're getting up towards Tuolton Sherwood Road. And that's where we managed to shoehorn in a bike lane by adjusting the median, adjusting some of the lane spacings. We also adjusted where the median makes its curve between Warm Springs and Boones Ferry that gives drivers a little bit more space in the turns, and I think is helping our traffic flow quite a bit. I'm not seeing it back up there as much as it used to. The new pathway in the center there with the lights. For a lot of people, happy with how that one's coming out, and I'm really happy with it as well. Some of our flashing light crosswalks and the new sidewalks and the new curb ramps. And the last bits at, right at the Boones Ferry Warm Springs intersection, involve the meter box that PGE was scheduled to move last week. That is now scheduled for this coming week. That will be finishing off that last corner and last ADA ramp at Boones Ferry and Warm Springs. Highway 99, the sidewalk now that runs from the Pony Ridge neighborhood or Pacific Drive up to 124th Avenue. And it is just amazing to me how different it feels to walk along that particular area. Whereas before, it was almost impossible because you get to that Laurel Hedge and either you try to sprint full speed before the next car comes, or you were stuck. And now it feels like an actual sidewalk that's comfortable to walk on, and I'm really excited about it. In the Las Casitas neighborhood, we've added in a couple raised crosswalks, a strategically placed curb extension in what had been a blind spot where a lot of vehicles would park and people would have trouble seeing to pull out from 67th Avenue. We've also added streetlights around the loop, which is one of the big complaints that we're hearing from the residents was that it was dark or that there were places where the trees would block the current lights. So we added a number of new lights. We also added a crosswalk across Sagert Street, just to the west of 68th Avenue, near the bus stop. Hearing a lot of positives there. That's one where the contractor will be getting to replace the concrete. They had some issues with what they poured, so they will be removing and replacing some concrete there in a few weeks. We'll have the date on that one soon. That crosswalk is open and the bus stop's working. They're finishing up the Sagert Bridge walkway. And that also has made a big difference for walking across, you know, already. And it's been amazing to me how many people use that bridge. Our stormwater mitigation project over in the Sandalwood Condos area, this is southwest of Martin Azzi and Sagert, where we're now treating a fair amount of the flow of that particular tributary of Nyberg Creek. So we're able to, by making one investment here, to not have to do separate stormwater facilities on all the other projects in the program. So this ended up using taxpayer dollars pretty well. And then there's a picture of me on the left dumping the bottle of water into our porous concrete sidewalk that's out by Highway 99. That was from our bus tour a couple of months ago. And as we talked about, we had the end of the trail tour. And then the report card in the report here documents all the different project costs. These projects had a huge range in size from about 15,000 to about 8 million. And we're excited to be able to deliver all of this. It's about 24.8 million in bond funds, plus about another 5 or 6 million in other funds that were pulled in from TDT and Community Development Block Grant and a couple others that were able to get done. So we're excited to be, have made this much progress on 36 projects all over the community that I think are making a huge difference. The final report is in both English and Espanol. And we have a lot more information online, tuoltonmovingforward.com. And then, just to tease our next agenda item, we'll be talking about our Transportation System Plan, which will then follow this of, you know, what's our vision for the future of transportation in Tuolton? And we got to receive a League of Oregon City's Good Governance Award for this program, which was pretty exciting. And any comments or questions or discussion?
Questions or comments for Mike? President Pratt.
That 99 sidewalk, is that one of those pervious or semi-pervious type?
It is.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. It is, and that saved us quite a bit in working with ODOT on drainage requirements. To be able to have that made a pervious, our pervious area didn't increase by more than 1,000 square feet.
Wow.
So that really helped us so that the water can just seep right through the sidewalk.
Well, I just want to say thank you for all the great work that was done. And I guess thanks to the council that only included Mayor Bubanek that pushed this forward.
Thank you. Other comments? I just have a question. What happened to the flashing beacon at Jergens Park? It fell down.
I know it fell down. I'm not sure why.
Yeah, I was wondering, because I don't see tracks or cars or anything. I was wondering if it bolt snapped or the metal just failed with the freezing rain.
Yeah. We're wondering if it was freezing or wind or both, or if it went the way of one of the trees that, you know. So.
And was that the only one of all the flashing beacons in the city?
As far as I know.
Okay.
And so the plan is our Public Works crew will put up the new, we call it a strut, the new pole that it goes on. And then the county signal techs that we contract with will be transferring the equipment over to the new pole. So it looks like we'll be able to get it fixed reasonably quickly.
All right, cool. Anything else? Yeah, I mean, it fell during the storm. So I thought maybe someone slid into it, but it wasn't bent at all, straight as anything. So I was just figuring metal fatigue, freezing, whatever.
That's what we're guessing, that it just sheared off of the base. It looks like a wind load combined with.
The concrete. Yep. Not bad, though, if that's the only one that fell.
I just want to, I just want to add that I've received a lot of great feedback from the community, especially where there are art, pieces of art within the, like, the concrete and the. I actually was talking to someone, a family that lives right on that Boones Ferry Road area. And they were saying they really feel, it feels really nice to walk and then learn and look at the little arts and drawings and things that people did. And they really, really feel a part of this community because they were, at the time, when we were asking what kind of art we wanted to put around the city, they were part of that process. So they feel very included in that process. So thank you.
Great. Councilor Gonzalez?
I also have a general comment. I am out and about quite a bit in our community, and I do get a lot of feedback from, it's amazing how you can see our city working. They point out the sidewalks, the end caps, the lights, all these various things, and it's very appreciative. I was not on council, but I know a lot went into this. And I want to say thank you so much for, for doing all this work because it does take a lot of collaboration and coordination and to sync up with communication. It's just amazing. Makes me very proud to be in this position. So much has been done for our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it was a real priority of ours to try to stretch the dollars as far as we can go and try to get as much done as possible with them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, again, thank you. We're going to have more opportunities to thank staff and the whole project overall on Friday. Looking forward to that. And Mike, thanks for everything you've done and all of city staff. The consultants that helped us with this, the construction crews that made it happen. Overall, great effort. We won the award because how well this was run. And we set a standard that people are going to be hard to match because we did, you know, staff did a terrific job on this, so thanks again.
Great, thank you.
So that brings us to item number two, a TSP update led by Cody. Welcome, Cody. Mike gets to come up again.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for being here this evening. My name's Cody Field, Management Analyst and Community Development. And I'm part of the Transportation System Plan Project Team with Mike here and our Assistant Community Development Director, Steve Koper. We're excited to be here again for another TSP update for you. He will keep my remarks brief because I want to allow enough time for our consultant team members to walk through the slides. So I think you've probably been introduced once already, but we have Brianna Calhoun here from Farron Peers. And I believe Katie Celine is joining remotely from Alta Planning and Design. And they're going to provide an update for you on the progress we've made since our team was here back in August. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Brianna.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I'm really excited to be back in front of you and giving you an update on what we've been working on and where we are going next with the project. So we did introductions, wonderful. Okay, so sorry, I'll go back to the end of here. So we have three pretty meaty topics to discuss today. The first is the goals. So we went through the draft, like, first round of goals with you back in August. So we're going to come back to those after some revisions. We're also going to summarize what we've been doing for community engagement throughout this process so far and then give you a high-level overview of the existing conditions and what we've been putting into that work so that you should have that full document in your packet. So to start with the goals, so again, you saw these goals back in August, and that was the kind of first cut, looking at the previous TSP, what was in other planning documents. And then took that with city input, with the input we received from you all, as well as we then went to the community as part of our community outreach, with which Katie will go into a little more detail. But we asked a lot of questions in that outreach about priorities for the transportation system and what people really wanted to see out of this planning process and used all of that feedback to adjust and refine the goals from where they had started in August. And then just recently, we were at the Community Advisory Committee, just about two weeks ago, and received some input from them as well to round out all of this process. So we now, we have five transportation goals. We had elevated some things that we had heard from multiple sources, such as safety and making sure safety was a part of this. We added health as part of our climate and health goals and reworked some of the wording to really make sure that it was reflecting the priorities that we heard from everyone. So I would love to open this up for discussion and input. If you see anything that didn't really get captured, that maybe you thought you would provide an input on last time that we need to refine and just get your thoughts on these. And there will also be time in the next week or two to think through these and provide thoughts as well after the meeting.
I'm wondering, and I know I brought this up at the TSP, but so many of our needs for improvements, the big ones, involve roads that are not owned by the city. And just that we have some wording in there that we somehow are working with the other entities, governmental entities to, you know, I can think of many, but Boones Ferry Road at Tuolton Sherwood, the Boones Ferry Bridge, you know, I could go on and on. The other end of Boones Ferry. But just that we're, we have that included because I think that's such a big part of the improvements that are left to be done.
Thank you.
Those are comments? Sorry?
Those are comments?
Nothing yet.
Okay. No problem, if you think of them later, definitely jump on in. So then from the transportation goals, we'll be then, I guess, next steps will be taking all this, this input, any further input you think of later, as well as input from the Community Advisory Committee that we haven't been able to wrap into this yet. And then finalizing these to be able to then use this later in the process when we're thinking about projects and how we prioritize projects and making sure that the projects we're prioritizing are also meeting the goals that we've identified here. And another step of this will be thinking through policies in more detail and then looking through the policies that you currently have and seeing how those match up with the goals that we've identified and making any changes to those that need to be updated to match the goals. Katie, were you able to join online?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Can you see me? Am I projected somewhere or just a voice?
You're just a voice.
Okay, great. Well, pleasure to be here this evening. I'm Katie Celine, Alta Planning Design. Happy to give an update on our TSP engagement process so far. As you can see on the timeline, we are right at the end of fees to listen and learn. We had active outreach late last summer and then ramping up in October and November with a range of events and a survey, which I'll get more into in a moment. The purpose of this phase of engagement was really to build community awareness about the fact that the TSP was happening, why it matters, and start to hear from community members about their transportation needs and priorities. And one of our major goals for this engagement round was connecting the dots between the TSP and the Tuolton Moving Forward Bond Program and making sure that people see how the planning work that we're doing with the TSP can lead to these tangible changes and projects that people are seeing pop up in their neighborhoods. And then looking ahead, we're in a bit of a lull for engagement for a while. Well, we're going to be working on policy and network development. But then we'll be back in a few months to get additional input on how the goals that Brianna was just going over connect to potential projects and whether we're on the right track sharing the draft project list. And next slide, please. I think there's one before this. Yes, thank you. So I'll share a bit more about our recent engagement activities and what we learned. So on this slide, you can see kind of an overview of the different events and activities that we've hosted to date. We had a couple of kind of tabling events where we had conversations with participants, meeting people that were already, you know, attending that event. We were at Viva Tuolton National Night Out and the Pumpkin Regatta. And then we held an open house at the Tuolton Library. You'll see a couple of photos from that event sprinkled throughout. We also had a series of focus groups, which we have been working with Community Engagement Liaisons. They're another firm that's on our team. And those were on Zoom. And I'm a great opportunity to hear some more in-depth feedback from community members that are potentially typically harder to reach through your average planning process. And then we had the big survey, which was available online and via hard copies. And we had just over 200 participants in that. And then throughout all of this, we've also been sharing out information on the project website. We've got an email list going, building on the bond program list. We also posted lawn signs and flyers around town. Hopefully, many of you saw those. And had a billboard, a banner on Tuolton Sherwood Road to help just really get the word out that this project was happening. Our goal is to make it as easy as possible for people to find out and be able to participate in the project and offering kind of quick ways to give a little feedback or if folks have more in-depth opinions, have kind of longer-form ways to weigh in. And all engagement has been available in English and Spanish with the targeted focus groups to get specific feedback from a group of Spanish-speaking community members, as well as transit riders and more generally, people of color. Our demographics for the survey actually tracked pretty closely with city averages, including a 17% response, 17% of respondents who identified as Latino. Next slide, please. And then just a few of our key takeaways so far. Many of the folks that we've been talking to across the city want to walk a bike and take transit more than they do now. Safe routes to school, as you can see from the chart here on the slide, is a major kind of unifying priority. Community members also want to be able to continue to travel bike car and are concerned about future capacity of the roadway system as the city continues to grow. And then are also concerned about increasing traffic congestion. Next slide. And then a few other takeaways here. Improving safety for road users is a high priority. Specifically, we saw a lot of support for improving walking and biking infrastructure, crossings. As you can see in the graphic, the little chart here came up as a, as a priority. Pedestrian scale lighting is another theme that emerged, particularly in the focus groups that we did and at the open house. That was something that many attendees brought up and wanted to make sure was on our radar. Community members want to see improved coverage and frequency of transit service, as well as improvements to bus stops. And then finally, another takeaway that I'd like to mention is that it's been really fun to do this work on the heels of the bond program. You can really feel people's confidence and enthusiasm for their local government and a really, really tangible belief that the things that go into the plans that we make actually lead to projects being built. And it's a very, very fun and unique lens to bring to the community conversations that we've been having. And that's all I've prepared. Happy to answer any questions or get into more depth on any thing that I brought up.
Questions?
Well, thank you very much, Katie. So then the last kind of piece of our presentation today is just to give you an overview of the existing conditions, work that we've been doing. So it's hard to decide what to do into the future until you understand what you have on the ground today and what's been just recently built and where you may still have gaps or opportunities to make change. And so we've been doing a very comprehensive look at what has been built on the ground today for all different travelers, all different modes with all different abilities in different areas of the city and looking at some of the underlying structures, such as land use and, and kind of demographics that also speak to how we might think about the projects that we eventually get to put into this plan. So I just in the, for the sake of time, we're, we are doing kind of a high-level overview of the existing conditions. This doesn't have everything that's in the full plan, so. But we'll just speak to this at a high level. I'm going to hold comments to the end, if that's okay, so that we just are able to get through all those slides. But then happy to take some comments and then kind of leave you with some questions and thoughts for takeaways as you're looking through the full plan and looking at the maps that we've created. So I'm going to start with an overview of the roadway system. So one thing that underpins how we think about the planned roadways and how we think about any changes to the roadways is our functional classification. We have to really think about who it's intended to serve and what sort of traffic or function it's intended to serve. And so this guides how we want to plan those features and how we want to potentially prioritize features on those roadways. I think an easy to understand example is we're not going to take a local neighborhood street and put, make it five lanes and 45 miles an hour. That's not serving the function that it's supposed to serve. And so we really think about this as the baseline for when we're thinking about projects, when we're thinking about, is the roadway currently functioning how it's planned to? And are there any changes that need to happen to make those match up? And then again, as we're thinking about features of that roadway and projects and sidewalks and bike lanes and all those other pieces of it, does that match with the functional class and how might we, we plan those differently? Another key thing that the council brought up is the roadway ownership. So not every roadway in Tuolton is owned and maintained by the city of Tuolton. You also have roadways and interchanges and intersections that ODOT controls that both Washington County and Clackamas County are a part of. And so when thinking about that, it both provides opportunities for shared investment and shared projects. But it also can provide maybe some complications in making sure that we're coordinating well and that the facilities are built to that jurisdiction standards when we're planning those out. So it kind of has both sides of that coin. It's something we certainly think about when we're thinking about the projects that we are putting together. So then, into transit service, Twalton has three different transit providers that are operating regularly here. You have TriMet, you have Smart, and then you also have Ride Connection that runs the shuttles. And so, something that can be a unique challenge is that the city doesn't directly control the transit service or coverage that is happening here. But the one fantastic thing about the TSP is that it gives you the ability to understand how people would like to use transit and then advocate for that with these regional services. And also, think about what parts of the transit system you can control. Can you control the safe access to transit? Can you control what, how transit runs on the right of way that you do control? And so, thinking about that creatively and thinking about that as a way to advocate for transit service and how that might be helpful in the city and how people might want to use it.
All right, and then, this map, next couple will be about active transportation and the existing facilities there. This slide here, starting out with the pedestrian network, it shows Twalton's robust sidewalk and trail network. Both are very complete, particularly on residential streets and in neighborhoods. You can see the most streets in gray have sidewalks on both sides, while the segments in red and purple have sidewalks on just one side or not at all. And then, we'll be looking at those as potential gaps as we move forward. Next slide, please. And then, the next map here shows pedestrian system crossings on main roads across the city. So, building on the great sidewalk network, crossings are a major infrastructure focus to help people get where they need to go, be able to cross busy roads that can be barriers. On the map, the black dots are marked crosswalks, many of which are the flashing beacon crosswalks that have been going in across Twalton through the bond program. And the map also illustrates the distance between marked crosswalks. So you can see the light red and dark red are like the longest distance between marked crosswalks. And some key points here, the distance between marked crosswalks is the lowest in downtown and the longest in industrial areas, which makes a lot of sense when you think about the amount of foot traffic in those areas. And there are a lot of, a few arterial and collector roadways that do have crossing distances greater than a quarter mile and a few greater than a half mile. And we'll be looking at some of the destinations and kind of land use and considering those as gaps or places that we might focus as we start to develop projects. Next slide, please. And then, this map shows Twalton's existing bike network. Of course, as you all know, most of the bike facilities are bike lanes on heavier traffic streets. Those are illustrated in the blue and pink on the map. The map also shows the off-street trail network, which is very extensive, but for bikes, for people biking, it doesn't necessarily connect to most destinations that people are trying to access, to be used as a transportation option. And of course, I-5 is a major barrier for people biking east and west across the city. So looking ahead here, some of the things we'll be thinking about are how can we create more options for people biking on lower traffic streets that would be more comfortable for more residents to be able to bike? And also, to keep in mind who we're planning for, who we're thinking about as someone who might want to bike in Twalton. It's not just the long-distance or recreational cyclist. This really includes students walking and biking to school, families or other residents who just need to get to doctor's appointments or the store or just other destinations. And we'll also want to think about e-bike infrastructure as well, which can be a supplement for transit trips for longer distances. Next slide.
All right, and then, we had certainly heard that safety is a priority in a lot of different forums. And so, we were certainly looking at the collision history here as well to understand where we've observed collisions on the different corridors, where we see the largest hotspots, and also parsing that out into fatal or serious injury collisions to understand especially where those are happening, as well as any collisions that involve a bicyclist or pedestrian, some of the most vulnerable users that are on the road. And so, really thinking about where those are happening, if there's any information that can back up kind of what's happening in those particular locations, and then thinking through what, you know, this is part of, again, the whole system of projects and priorities and policies and education and programs that we can do in the city, excuse me, to help to address some of these hotspots in the city. Okay. So again, kind of a highlight snippet of a little bit of different pieces from all these different areas. The full existing conditions packet is much longer, there's a lot more maps to parse through, but we would really love to, I think we zoomed through that, so we have enough time for a handful of questions if you have specific ones, but really, we would love, as you're reading through that or as you're thinking through these topics, to think about, you know, where are there still existing challenges and then what would be good opportunities to create new connections or enhance the system that's already there? And also, just kind of like, is there anything we missed? There's a lot of data, there's a lot of analysis, we've gotten fantastic feedback from the city and the community, but, you know, are there still things that maybe we're not quite capturing in here that we want to make sure are captured as part of this analysis?
Questions or comments?
Well, really quick, I want to say, in the TSP meeting, it was really stunning how much the bond had put in more crosswalks and reduced that distance and made it a lot safer for pedestrians. And then, when I look at this hotspot map, it really looks like that whole area around Worm Springs is down to Twalton Sherwood. That seems like a big area, that big yellow area really looks like something we need to focus on, and there's a lot of businesses in there, so I'm assuming there's probably people walking and people going fast. That's it.
And a lot of that's Twalton Sherwood Road.
Right.
Yeah.
Counsel Rhea.
I also noticed that the, in addition to what Counselor probably was saying, the 124th Street, could that be temporarily because there are construction going on there? And would that be, or kind of, I mean, sometimes they straight and turn here and then it's a lot of confusion around that area right now?
Yeah.
But it could be just currently right now versus, you know, future once it's done, might not have that much confusion.
So what I've seen from looking at crash reports over the years, we have a lot of rear-enders, people on Twalton Sherwood Road getting to the end of the queue of traffic from 124th Avenue, because that's the intersection that tends to have the most delay in that particular segment of 124th. And then, how those particularly get coded, are they right at the intersection, you know, as the back of the queue, several hundred feet away? Be a little different, but they tend to get coded to the Twalton Sherwood at 124th, which I think is why that shows up as such a hotspot. But we have seen a whole lot of rear-enders on Twalton Sherwood at 124th that, I think there's a lot of promise that the county project will be able to address that and really help ease the capacity issues that I think are causing the safety issues.
Right. I was just wondering if it was just temporary because of the transport. There's, I was just there like 10 minutes ago, I mean, before I came to the office. So that's why I just, it just stuck, stuck out right now. And I'm just wondering if it's temporary because of that and maybe the main focus seems to be right on that Twalton, that Martin Assi area and seems to be very congested and there's always, there's buses and there's a lot going on there, so maybe that's why that needs to have a priority. I was just thinking about that. Thank you.
And I'll just say that the data from ODOT is, it lags a little bit because they have to collect it all and get it all into a good shape, so this is a little bit old. It's five years of collision data from 2017 to 2021, I think, so it wouldn't capture the current construction situation, but it also doesn't show what's changed with the new construction and some of the new RRFs and things like that. So it'll be a little bit of a, this is the before study, but with all of these great changes, what do we then see after and as we catch up with some of those, too?
Counsel Brooks.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late. I, when I'm looking at this and when I hear feedback from the community as well, my question is, especially dealing with older data that might also have been during COVID when the roads were a little bit lighter, how do we do planning projections, especially with people's concerns around increasing traffic due to tolls and development? Because I would agree, the county projects would seem to help, although I don't know if they're going to really actually keep up with capacity. So I'm just curious about if we do projections or if we just base everything on five years ago or whatever it was.
Yeah, specifically for safety, the collision data, we don't project out the collision data, that's just a hard one to project, it tends to fluctuate a little bit. We certainly do projections on the land use and associated kind of traffic growth in the region and in the city, so that is something that we'll be working into right now. So that, I wouldn't say it's quite a proxy to safety, but certainly that is something that we can take into consideration as we're thinking about in any sort of changes or increase in traffic and vehicles on the road as we plan into the future.
And I think, in terms of capacity, I think the answer I have to say is just very carefully, because you're right, you're raising a pretty good issue there. We had, I'd call it normal data up through 2019, and then, you know, 2020, the pandemic hit, traffic dropped considerably, especially in the mornings. And then, in a lot of places, it's come back up and some places even beyond, particularly in the afternoons. So we're looking at that pretty closely as we get into more of our future modeling of what can we use from 2019, what kind of trends are we seeing now? Like, I've been observing, it seems like of the proportion of traffic, we now seem to have less going north and more going south. So more towards the outer parts of the urban area or across Oregon City and Beaverton and less into downtown Portland. And we're working with our consultants and metro modelers and Washington County's modelers on what can we, what can we learn from what we've seen and how can we really adjust to it? So I think the best answer I can give on that is very carefully.
And my other question, too, was with the collisions and just because there was that fatality data that you could incorporate and that we looked at for the tolling conversation, is there a simple way to add some, you know, some data around as things increase what we anticipate? Not to be predicting the future, but to be basing it on scientific probability.
Yeah, that's a very good point that we'll try to keep in mind going forward.
Thank you.
So am I hearing you correctly that like, known development like Autumn Sunrise and the SEPA project, that Plan B Gardens, that that will kind of be factored in, because we know that we're going to have even more traffic on Boone's Ferry up there? And like, looking at, I guess it's kind of a gap, you probably have better ideas than I would, but just how you expect that traffic to impact? Which I, yeah, I know, you don't know if they're going to go north or south.
Yeah, we have an estimate from the traffic studies of, you know, that probably more of that traffic will be getting to I-5 through the North Wilsonville interchange from that part of town. And we'll do our best to incorporate that as we get into our future modeling and our capacity, capacity projections.
Right, okay.
Counsel Saka.
I have a, I don't know, this might be a stupid question, but have we ever looked at the ability for changing out stoplights to things like roundabouts that different cities are using a lot lately? I, my son lives in central Oregon, and so I bend a lot, and there are, there's not a whole lot of traffic lights, but there's a whole lot of roundabouts and it seems to keep the traffic moving. I'll bet that speed limits are a lot lower there with the roundabouts, but I was just wondering if that's anything that we've ever looked at.
That's definitely something that we look at and something that we can consider as we look into the future.
Like, for instance, the Martin Assi and Sagert, we did look at a roundabout there, but the grade didn't allow for a roundabout there. That's the most recent one we looked at. But roundabouts take more land than traffic signals do, and so that always ends up in the configuration, you know, the consideration for that.
Thank you.
Just, I'd like to see data also from, I was just adding up the data that you collected from the community engagement, this before we move forward to the next topic. I'd like to see data collected during winter months, because I think people's minds are in different mode. I'm looking at when you collected the data, and I'm thinking, yeah, National Night Out August and, you know, Viva Twalton July. So there are months that are a little bit more brighter, so, and warmer, so I'm wondering if the data would be different doing it during winter months when, you know, it's dark around four o'clock and it gets a little, you know, people can't see well, some people don't drive well at night. So I think I'd like to see what kind of perspective people have with the safety of their driving around and what, they might see a light that doesn't turn on on certain streets or, I just wonder, because when I drive at nighttime, it's totally different than when I, in the daytime, I can actually notice spots in the area that are darker than, and they're like, the whole Martin Assi Sagert area seems a little dark to me, but that's just me. And I just wonder if there's some data we can collect from during the winter months where people's mindset aren't in that mode. That's, that's just a suggestion.
No, yeah, that's a really interesting suggestion. Yeah.
I can just chime in. The survey was actually open through mid-November, which included a interactive map to collect points on some of those, like, safety concern locations. So we, like, the event started in the summer and then we really continued through mid-October, and I think that's where some of the comments about lighting were coming up, because people were, came to the open house, which was at the beginning of November, and lighting was top of mind because it was so dark. But you're totally right on the, like, differences in perspectives at different times of year, so we'll definitely keep that in mind as we're thinking about what we're hearing from folks.
Yeah, that is a good point. I tend to get most of the streetlight requests in November.
Time changes.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Brooks.
Counsel Rhea's point has me thinking, and I'm not sure if you guys covered this or not, but also, conditions are different, so it's a lot wetter. And I have like an off, off-this-topic question, too, just like over by Fred Meyer's always. has this flooding thing going on and there's cones around it and that happens in the winter pretty predictably. And I don't know what that's from. I go by there and I'm like, I wonder what that's from besides more water. So I'm curious about those kinds of safety issues as well where I can't imagine being a bicyclist trying to navigate that much less when we're worried about cars getting in stuff too deep. So and just some of the climate stuff that we're dealing with, with increased ice, with different things coming down on bike lanes like people have talked to me about concerns about walking, just with like branch debris and just stuff like that. And I was wondering if that was included in the planning anywhere.
I want to mention for the Neighbor Creek, I was asked about that earlier. So that particular spot is where a lot of the like downtown area and the southern kind of just south of downtown up towards Sagert Street all drains through that area. And we do have a capital improvement project to make some pretty big fixes there. One would be to try to get the flooding off of Martin Assi. This particular year, we had some debris that got caught up in one of the big culverts that flows into Nyberg Creek. So we will be looking to avoid that and kind of keep the flooding from happening as part of a separate stormwater project.
Yeah, I just think, and, and it's the same thing with those predictability things where we see, we have such good data in some of the studies from the Climate Action Plan about what, what kind of things we anticipate, what, you know, what an atmospheric river is. I mean, they're pretty incredible things and so, and they're not going anywhere. So anyway, those are thoughts that I, that come to mind as well as things continue. Thanks.
Others? Council Hillier.
Thank you. Would, um, would you go back to the conversation about the bike routes for me, please? And the clarification of, I think you, I heard you say that you did collect information from bicyclists on if they were recreational, if they're trying to get to a service. And is that information percentage wise in the report and I can find that or?
So the map is just existing facilities and what I was like, just where bike lanes are. And I was just talking about like the different kind of types of cyclists and that we really want to be sure to plan for, as we say, like all ages and abilities as we think about moving forward.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just making sure. I've just got two. Uh, one for your second question about opportunities to create connections or enhance existing. We've always had this dream of, you know, the neighborhood, neighborhood circulation, connectivity, somehow working with TriMet and Ride Connection. We have these neighborhood shuttles that most people still to this day don't know about. They think it's only for workforce, you know, folks trying to get from west into our industrial area. They have no idea they could walk on toward from a neighborhood. So the things I'm kind of interested in is that, you know, the, the whole purpose of Ride Connection is that last mile and better serving our neighborhoods if possible, expanding the three loops that we have to reach more to the neighborhoods versus just the main arteries. Of course, I certainly want to continue to get folks to their job sites, but someone wants to say from C, that when SEPA opens up and wants to jump on a Ride Connection shuttle to get to Fred Meyer, that it's easy and convenient and they actually know about it, that exists and is free. Uh, and my second thing is what's interesting on the pedestrian thing, I read this yesterday because I was reading up on this. I don't know if Mike's seen this, the push in other cities to get rid of ride on red. That the accident data has shown over the years that ride on red has about a 60% increase before it started with pedestrian and bicycle accidents. I know the city of Denver, the city of Phoenix, there's a whole bunch of cities actually looking at this to get rid of it. You know, the history of it is, is, it was created back when we had the oil crisis under President Nixon to be fuel efficient, but when they look back on safety data, this is how people getting hit all the time. How many, how many of us have seen one, someone go in the crosswalk and a car almost hits them and they bang their fist on the person's hood? Have you heard there, I guess it's bubbling up and it's very controversial in Colorado and Denver with the pro and the against folks about losing ride on red.
Yeah, I've definitely heard about the discussion happening and seen a number of cities. There are some that never adopted the ride on red. I think that would be a pretty big policy decision.
Oh, yeah.
That would be.
But just interesting how that's bubbling up because the Bureau of Specifics slide here about bicycle and pedestrian collisions, they're saying that's the, pretty much the number one reason it's happening is ride on red. Because people aren't paying attention to the bicyclist or the person who's walking. They're just focused on getting through that light. So I just brought it up to see if you heard it. It popped up on my feed yesterday. I was like, as I was looking at this.
It's an interesting discussion.
Which kind of concerns me about Google that it popped up. But any other questions?
Yeah, speaking of the traffic, I actually sent this to, I was in Boston and I was in this smaller, similar to Tuolton town and they had bicycles that were, and I saw this also in Barcelona and I don't know if it happens here, but they're like, it's the side, the walkway, the sidewalk, you're walking and then there's these really, but they're all lift and they're kind of, you're not on the road with the, with the, the cars. And then I thought that was a really neat idea that I felt our small city can probably in the future. I'm not, I was just thinking about that, but I don't even know if that's even to a voice. I took pictures of it and sent them to Ross. I don't know if he got them, but it was actually a pretty good safety way of keeping cyclists or people riding, riding their bikes from the rest of the, the rest of the cars because it was lifted as a sidewalk, but it was, you can see the barks of, the, the marks of the bicycles and then of course the next was the walk where you can walk in. They actually had the, it was really neatly done. So I'm just, you're saying there are some ideas out there that other cities have, have adopted that might work for us in the future.
So if the, if the roadway was here and sidewalk is here, was the bike lane like in the middle between or was it up at sidewalk height?
It's up sidewalk, sidewalk height.
Okay.
And it was like the sidewalk was, okay, so the bike lane and then the sidewalk where you go down a step to go to the, that's how we do it right now. Well, that was lifted to, at the same level of the sidewalk. So that way, and they were, yeah, so it was, I saw that also and I, it was, because I was riding a few bicycles and, and that's, I felt safe.
So a car would have to go over a curb.
Yeah, to hit somebody. They would have to go over the sidewalk to hit a cyclist. Yeah. So, yeah, they would have to intentionally do it. But it was a neat idea and I took a picture of qualifying it and sent it to you and something to consider for the future, but it was safe and I actually, I, the whole time I was in that city, I was there for a week. I rode my bike everywhere because I felt safe.
That's great.
Thank you.
And one of the things we're doing that gets kind of that direction, we work with the county on the Tuolton Sherwood Road construction. So the new project that's getting widened, instead of having a bike lane on the street, it'll be a 12-foot wide multi-use path. So it'll basically be a combined bike lane, sidewalk along Tuolton Sherwood Road, separated by a bit of a plantar strip of trees. So I think that'll help at least make the cyclists feel safer. Thank you for that. Thank you.
To clarify, the pedestrians and the bicyclists will be on the same path? Or is there some designation for the cyclists?
For that project, they'd be on the same path. So it would be a 12-foot multi-use path used by both pedestrians and cyclists in Tuolton Sherwood Road.
Yeah, I can envision it, but I just can't believe that it's, that is really the safest thing, not to have some sort of lane that the bicyclists would know to go in and pedestrian, I mean.
It's different colors.
They're marked.
Yeah, they're marked in different colors.
It's marked?
Yeah, they have them down.
Oh, that's, but I, I thought, I guess I didn't ask that question very well.
Yeah, there can be another step to take to basically make it like two separate facilities.
Yeah, but I,
Okay.
So there will be marking to separate walk here, ride here or no?
Not on Tuolton Sherwood Road.
Okay.
But that's something that could be done. I've seen other places do as well.
I feel like, I mean, especially if there's a little one out, you know, riding their bike, learning and, and, you know, I don't know. Just feels like that'd be a lot safer for everyone.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Did you have a next steps slide?
I do. All right. So as I said, this is kind of an overview, but there's a lot more material that you can review. We'd love to get your feedback by about early next week, the end of the, the month here, so that we can take all of that and wrap it into some final round of edits and make sure that we've got that all cleaned up and finalized for you before we're moving on to the next steps. So yes, we'll be finalizing the goals and the existing additions. And then we will also be having an engagement summary document that will, that will be out if we don't have that out yet. And then we'll be, next touch point will be kind of starting to think about like modal priority networks where, you know, we can't put a bike lane on every single road in the city. So what does that look like? How do we want to build a network that is connected and how do we use that to then build into projects and project lists?
I assume, and maybe this goes without asking, but as we think about things like pedestrians and bike, bike lanes, we're working with our neighboring cities to, to make sure that we have a cohesive system throughout the region.
Yeah, we both look at planned projects that are planned within the, the other kind of neighboring cities on the borders to see how those connect in. As well as then we have a technical advisory committee. We have kind of a roster of folks from the surrounding communities as well as most we have on it, totem fire and rescue, like the school district. So that we can put out these materials to them as well and get their feedback and understand if they, you know, if we put out a project here and Tigard says, oh, hey, also we've got a, a project that's connecting. We can, you know, have that conversation and that, that dialogue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
All right. That brings us to Megan, prohibition and regulation of camping on public property ordinance. Check in.
All right. Hello, everyone. Uh, I am Megan George, the deputy city manager in Tuolton and I'm here to talk about the implementation of ordinance 1475-23 or the prohibition and regulation of camping on public property in Tuolton. As a reminder, the intent behind the ordinance was to become legally compliant with recent state and federal laws. The ultimate goal, of course, is to support people to find shelter and supportive housing services. In December, we heard an update from Washington County's Department of Housing Services on their implementation of the strategic housing services funding. And then of course, earlier this month, we heard an update from Family Promise of Tuolton Valley, who is a recipient of both our outside agency grant fund as well as strategic housing services funding from Washington County. So thus, tonight's presentation is pretty limited in scope and will only cover implementation of ordinance 1475-23. Starting with just a little bit of background information, there are two key federal court opinions, Martin v. Boise and Johnson v. Grants Pass. In addition to these two cases, the Oregon Legislature enacted House Bill 3115 during the 2021 legislative session in an attempt to clarify, expand and codify some of the key holdings in those court decisions. The essence of the court opinions and the state law is that you cannot punish a person who is experiencing homelessness for sitting, sleeping or lying on public property when that person has no place else to go. Prior to the city council's action last June, Tuolton Municipal Code prohibited camping on public property. In June, the city council passed the ordinance, which created time, place and manner regulations for camping on public property. So the time prohibitions was camping is prohibited between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. The place restrictions prohibited camping near schools, in parks, in wetland areas or in the public right of way. So after restricting these locations and a few others, the only space remaining is the lot adjacent to the police department. As far as manner restrictions, people are prohibited when camping from accumulating or discarding trash, starting fires, digging, erecting or setting up a permanent structure. Efforts were made at the time for Tuolton's ordinance to be very similar to neighboring jurisdictions to the extent that was feasible. And when the ordinance was adopted, we talked about coming back in six months to check in on how implementation was going. My staff report indicated that there have been no changes to the legal landscape related to prohibition and regulation of camping on public property in Oregon. While that's technically true, there has been some late breaking news over the past few weeks. So first, the US Supreme Court decided to hear City of Grants pass for Johnson. They have not yet announced a hearing date, so we don't know exactly when that will happen or what that will look like. And second, the US District Court of Oregon issued a decision in Billado, I'm not sure I'm saying that one right, versus City of Medford. In this decision, the court upheld the ordinance's constitutional saying, and I quote, "Being that the city allows its unhoused residents to reasonably sleep with bedding to keep warm and dry in designated public areas around Medford, the court finds the camping ordinance reasonable." Medford's ordinance is one of the ordinances we looked at in drafting ours. Regardless of what happens with those two cases, House Bill 3115 still applies. Meaning that even if the US Supreme Court finds in Grants Pass's favor, Tuolton's ordinances must still comply with House Bill 3115. Okay, now on to implementation in Tuolton. Since the ordinance was adopted, we have not seen a change to the frequency or the impacts associated with camping outside. The police department observed one individual camping at the allowable location for one night and that's it. In addition, there's been a separate code created for calls related to homelessness issues. And so over the past six months, we've been able to track data in other ways and we are still experiencing a low frequency of calls related to a variety of issues. We have continued to stay engaged and connected to cities and counties in both Washington and Clackamas Counties. And thus far, we don't know of anybody planning to make changes to their ordinance at this time. And so for those reasons, we do not recommend making changes to the Tuolton's ordinance. I will pause here for the council's discussion and of course, if you have any thoughts on making changes to Tuolton's ordinance, but I do want to circle back at the end for one more update.
Questions or comments for Megan?
I, I, I don't see any reason to make any changes at this time.
Council Sacco.
Question. Um, so with that one person, I'm just wondering if we have a, a process or a best use practice of approaching people that are camping in that location and offering any services or making sure that they're aware of services that are available.
Yeah, so the approach is not specific to that location. When we receive calls for a variety of issues related to homelessness or when folks at our library encounter people, for example, we have pre-created a brochure with information on where they can plug in to Washington County's Coordinated Point of Entry and Clackamas County's Coordinated Point of Entry. And when folks call one of those two lines, they get a case number assigned to become part of the system so that an individual can figure out the best shelter or housing supportive services available to them. And so that information is being passed along. There's also more information provided about Tuolton's specific restrictions. In this specific instance, the individual was there overnight and came quite late after it was already dark and left before it was light in the morning. And so I don't believe they were approached by our department. Our community services officer is the person who runs point on dealing with all of the calls related to homelessness issues. And so he's the primary point of contact that is engaging with folks. Yeah.
Council Brooks.
Thanks for the update. I'm not sure if this is going to be the other point that you're bringing up or not, but I was curious about more information about funding that we get because of
The position?
Yeah.
That is my other point.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just had a quick question. Councilor Sacco made me think about what are, is there information then that's been shared with the businesses or nonprofits and groups in the core area? For instance, I know that the Grange has had someone there and trying to navigate that and they've made phone calls, but at first weren't really sure. So I was just wondering if there's any outreach and I, I don't see any reason to make any changes to the ordinance, but I was just curious about information provided.
Yeah, there hasn't been a, an information campaign or any specific outreach to businesses in the downtown area or otherwise. I know our police department has been in contact specifically related to vehicle camping overnight with quite a few businesses in the area that see that. And then case by case has provided additional information, but there's been no specific outreach campaign.
I ask because I, I happen to know that the person's belongings were no longer on the Grange site. Grange site, I don't believe, but somewhere else and got thrown away. So I think it's a protective factor because people don't know what to do sometimes. So I'm wondering if there's...
Yeah.
I don't know what the solution is, but I just thought, you know, people who are already experiencing homelessness and they're so vulnerable with their, you know...
Yeah, storage of items.
Any, any, right. And I, and so there's just questions about how to handle those things. And so...
Yeah.
Being, I'm not sure the answer, but I just want to say that I think we maybe need to do something if we can.
I think it's definitely a challenge. Storage of items is something that's come up quite a bit across many communities. Washington County is currently working on a plan to provide storage facilities at some of their access centers. Just compassion, in addition to having shelter beds, is also under renovations to become an access center that would provide showers and supportive services and storage for people during the day of various items. I forget the specific House Bill number, but the one that was passed by the Oregon Legislature at the same time that 3115 was passed did have some requirements related to people's stuff. And so the police department does follow those protocols when they come upon an established camp, but that doesn't necessarily align with somebody stashing their backpack in a bush outside of a business or that type of thing. Yeah, it is a little unclear, which has made it complicated to provide helpful information. Yeah.
To that end, would it be possible to maybe, I'm thinking like around the commons there, like maybe by the bathrooms, just post something that says where our camping is and have numbers for people to call? So if, I guess, I think that's a... What? That's okay, Cindy.
No, I'm sorry. I thought in that discussion, we agreed that we weren't going to post signs.
We don't want to post signs?
I thought that's what we agreed to.
So we don't want, we don't want that information out there?
Do I have a brochure?
Yeah, but if someone's just out there homeless or houseless, how do they access it? They're not going to know where to look for a brochure, I guess is my point.
Yeah, I recall some of the conversation about posting permanent signage was that we weren't sure if this ordinance was going to stick for a few reasons, and circumstances at Washington County and Clackamas County are changing fairly regularly about which services are available...
Oh, that makes sense.
And how people can access it. In addition to the brochures, which we are having made available in English, Spanish, and Chuckies, I hope I'm saying that right, we're also going to plan to have cards that are available that staff can stick in their wallet, for example, that are more easily passed out.
So maybe that's something that could be distributed to the Grange and other businesses to have available.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
That might be the answer.
Anything else?
All right. My second update that Counselor Brooks alluded to. So in the next month or so, we anticipate having an intergovernmental agreement on your agenda between Washington County, Tigard, Sherwood, and Tuolton for the creation of a shared position called, at the moment at least, Homelessness Services System City Liaison. Say that three times fast. So the goal of this agreement is to support continued partnership between all of those entities in addressing homelessness issues generally and to coordinate and support of the strategies and homeless service system provided by community-based organizations. So this is the best part. Washington County will provide $200,000 in funding in each of the first three years of the agreement to fund the position fully. The City of Tigard will be the host for the position, and the person will be employed by the City of Tigard. And the primary responsibilities will include things like public relations and communications, coordination with Washington County, and community-based organizations, and participation in the annual point in time count. So it's quite possible that once this position is on board, they could do some of that outreach to businesses downtown. They could provide additional presentations to community groups or the CIOs that have interest in this specific topic. They could produce additional informational materials as we know what information to share, those types of things. Washington County is also funding positions in Hillsborough and Beaverton, and as part of the agreement, they will provide an annual report to all of the cities and the county. The agreement is currently routing its way through Washington County for signatures, and I'm hoping that it'll be here at one of our next two meetings. So with that, I can take any further questions.
Kudos to Washington County for remembering us.
Yeah.
I just, I'm just curious, I'm assuming the person that'll be in that position will speak multiple languages?
I don't know at this time. It's not a requirement as part of the IGA. Once the IGA is adopted by all of the entities, we'll put together a job description, which could include some of those specific requirements, and then it'll be a City of Tigard employee.
Counsel Brooks.
Can you clarify how us doing our homelessness ordinance helps us to get the funding and participation with that program?
Sure. So I don't know that it does help, per se. I think of them as separate efforts. Adopting this ordinance puts us into legal compliance with state and federal laws. Separate from that, Washington County has identified a need for additional coordination work between cities in themselves and the community-based organizations that they're contracting with to provide much of the direct service to individuals experiencing homelessness. So they've reached out for that reason, and knowing some of, some cities had capacity already, but many did not, including Tuolton and Sherwood. Tigard has one position assigned to this topic among a few other responsibilities. So they recognized the lack of capacity and the need and were able to identify funding for it. Yeah.
Anything else for Megan? Well, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to our agenda review and communications. I've got, let's see. I have Counselor Sacco's up for pledge allegiance. It does not look like we have any proclamations. We have some special reports. Any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Three items that seem kind of short for a change. Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and start the roundtable, and we'll start with Counselor Gonzalez.
It's been pretty quiet out there. I think the only thing I attended was a TSP transportation planning, and it was nice to hear all the various discussions around that, and that's all I have for the updates.
Counsel Brooks.
I want to thank all the community volunteers who were able to come during the weather event to the Arts Committee. We met. We mostly were going through the final questions that we'll be asking the applicants that are the artists that will be doing the Veterans Plaza work, so it's very exciting. And the finalists, there's the, just so people know, the whole committee for veterans is not just the Arts Committee. There's also veterans and other people involved, but so far, like the finalists have, there's been cohesiveness in the voting. So things are really going along well in that. And I want to say that Julie and Ross have done a lot of work as well coordinating that effort and working with outside people as well to help make sure that that process goes really well. So that's really exciting. The other thing is I'm in the middle of doing the ratings for the Community Development Block Grants, and those, we'll be seeing the interviews on Thursday. There might even be somebody from Tuolton there, from what I understand. And so I'm excited to see that. And finally, there was the final, the final draft report for the Water Consortium was shared with us. And if anybody would like a hard copy of the annual report, please let me know, and I'll let Rebecca know. Thanks.
Counselor Sacco. Counselor Hillier.
I don't have anything to report at this time.
Counsel Rais.
No updates. Thank you.
Wow. Counsel President Pratt.
I had three meetings, the TSP meeting, which was, I thought there was some really good input from citizens. And also, one thing I wanted to mention was that it got brought up about, I think as counsel, I get this a lot, but people think we control the light system. And, and that Mike McCarthy actually admitted that our system's a little outdated, so that's something that's, you know, got brought up and hopefully will be included in that further discussion. The, I went to C4 Metro, and we talked about the TRIMET Forward 2.0 program, which is, it's financially constrained, which pretty much means you just throw everything out there that you wish for. So I don't know what goes on after that with that program. Maybe Mayor Bubanik does. And then we talked about the EPA Climate Reduction Grant. There's a committee. These are grants from the federal government, and they look at communities that have a climate action plan or want it in progress. And the funding is five years of funding, you know, it's, so it's not forever, but it's for things to help with environment. So like, the thing that comes to mind for us would be great, like if we could put in EV charging stations or something, that would be an example of what it could be used for. And I was really happy to see that we have representation from Tuolton on that committee. So, and then the C4 tolling strategy subcommittee, we mostly got a recap of the last special subcommittee on transportation, the state subcommittee that's looking at the tolling pause. And from my understanding, they were supposed to be taking a deep dive, deep dive, into looking at traffic patterns and behavior patterns of people driving, and it was a pretty generic overview, so I wrote down who it was. Senator Finley and another person that I didn't write down, they, they asked like specifically for, they're like, we really want a deep dive. So it, to me, it was good to hear that they really want to see what's going on specifically. That's all I have.
On the 17th, they had the Greater Portland Inc. Board Meeting, where the budget for Greater Portland Inc. was approved. They're going to continue on marketing Portland to across the country as a site that you want to bring business to or expand your business. That's job number one from this year, and they're going to revise their performance metrics to reflect that, so we can better track impressions and leads and how many businesses do decide to come here and also find out why they do not, because that's a key in trying to turn the tide on the, what people think of Portland, what they assume is going on in Portland versus the reality, what's happening in Portland. On the next day was the West Side Economic Alliance, and Duncan Wise from the Oregon Business Council was the featured speaker, discussing what he thinks will come up in the short session and also the current business environment in Oregon versus the, you know, competing with Washington and tax situation. It was a really good discussion there. Today, my favorite meeting of all, every month, or now it's going to be every two months, is the RTAC meeting was today. There was a few focuses today. There was 85 minutes allotted to the discussion of what net revenue is and trying to pinpoint is, will there be any net revenues and how would they be distributed? Counsel Lewis of Metro and Mr. Isaac of the Downtown Chamber of Commerce are going to be testifying in front of the OTC on Wednesday. We're finally getting RTAC members to actually testify in front of the OTC instead of it just being ODOT. So they're going to report out on what the consensus was of RTAC on net revenue. There's a lot of discussion, a lot of questions you wouldn't believe still on what the definition of a corridor is, how the revenues are going to stay in the corridor, what is diversion? No one has really defined diversion. And then what is net revenue? You know, and is it, is the goal to have a toll that will pay for the infrastructure of the corridor itself plus potential impacts to the city there by raising the toll price? Or is it, you just don't factor that in, and we figure out how to pay for that somehow somewhere else? So there's a lot of discussion on that. ODOT has, remember the chart that Counsel President Pratt put out? They are focusing on scenario three. They're going to proceed with that with the study of a max toll of 275 each way on the Abernathy. It will also have surge pricing, but they will not toll overnight. So they ditched scenario number two, which was the max toll of 560, because they admitted it would crush the city's networks in terms of traffic. So, yeah, so they're looking at the max toll 275. People were relieved about no night tolling. There was quite a bit of discussion on the decision only to give a 50% discount to folks under the 200% federal poverty level, on where they're supposed to come up with the other 50%. And ODOT's assumption was that they'd probably go to the community action or some kind of agency like that and get the other 50%, which really irritated Virginia Garcia, Representative Virginia Garcia, about how these folks are supposed to get these, these dollars to make up the gap or be told, well, if you can't afford it, get on a bus, which I brought up. Well, you're not going to get on a bus in Tuolton because you're not going to go anywhere east-west on that bus. You're going to Portland, but if you live or work at Clackamas Town Center, you're not getting there on a bus.
They, they said that it was the 50% because they had taken that option off, the, the higher priced option off the table, and so it was a lower, a lower toll anyway.
No, it's... And then the discussion of the 400% still, why, you know, they're looking at maybe a 10 or 20% discount for folks under 400%, so between 200 and 400. And then finally, for those who don't know, Congress is in full gear with whatever acronym you'd like to call it. If you're a senator, you call it a CIP. If you're a, in the House of Representatives, you call it CPF. All of us all know these as earmarks. So it's a full gear, senators and our representatives looking for project lists by mid to late February. Government agencies and not-for-profits can apply. Remember that a congressperson has a max limit, I believe, 15, 13 or 15 projects with a max dollar amount of about a million dollars, where senators have about a $5 million cap and unlimited number of projects. So I'm having discussions tomorrow with Mitra from Senator Markley's office and with representatives of Lori DeReemer's office, because over the weekend, we realized that Tuolton Food Pantry is not in Congressional District Six, it's in District Five. So Congresswoman DeReemer would be the person we could chat with, so I'd meet with their staff along with the food pantry folks, because they got a really good plan, and ideally, she has the same priorities close to Representative Salinas about helping out folks in hunger and food pantries. And then Mitra is also, obviously with Senator White, Senator Markley, so that'd be, you know, not-for-profits and the city projects, they want to get some more inside baseball on what Senator Markley's looking for in terms of projects he'd be really interested in advocating for.
We're attending a webinar on Wednesday.
Yep.
And then we've got meetings internally to kind of put our heads together to figure out what might qualify.
And the big thing is it has to be done in a year. So it's going to be something that's ready to go, you've got construction quotes, stuff like that, ready to go. So that's the name of the game. And navigating the federal bureaucracy of each agency, having different criteria, different steps to apply for this grant.
Which will take six months.
We'll see. You don't got a lot of time. Counsel Hillier.
Just out of curiosity, to go back to the tolling, what did they define as overnight for no toll? Did they define that since they were working on definitions of many other things?
Of course.
Okay, I was just curious.
It's usually, they, they want to start tolling, they're talking about six, I think I've heard from six to nine. So between, you know, but it, it changes. It's all going to come down to it, the OTC decides, not what ODOT decides. You know, ODOT's going to present. But I, it's a pretty positive thing that RTAC will actually have a voice in the room finally.
Did RTAC, did you talk about revenue sharing either?
There is no revenue sharing. There's a letter from Chris Strickler saying it's never going to happen. ODOT's not interested in revenue sharing. Anything else? With that, we're done a little early, so we've got 25 minutes to take a break, chat, bio break, finish your dinner. We'll be, we, I'll go ahead and close this work session, and we'll convene our regular council meeting at 7 o'clock. Thank you.